Good evening. I will call the Planning Commission meeting to order. This is a regular -- oh, special meeting. This is a special meeting. It's January 17th. It's 5:00. And we are located here in the council chambers at City Hall. So I will start with Roque Hall on my left.
Rochino Farrell.
Mark Baughman.
Larry Crandall.
Shannon Collins.
Retuja Indapure.
So there are five of us tonight, which constitutes a quorum. We are missing Eric Brooks. And I'm sorry to say that we are missing Jane Garrison from here on out. She has decided to resign as of Friday. So, sorry to hear about that. And really gonna miss her. So with that, we'll start with approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be approved as distributed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda as distributed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the agenda is passed unanimously. The next item of business is meeting minutes from January 3rd, our regular meeting. Any comments, questions, changes? Nope.
A second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from January 3rd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? There are none. The minutes from January 3rd, 2019, pass unanimously. I will now move to public comment. Is there anyone who wants to do public comment tonight on a non-agenda item?
As Mary is working her way up there, I just want to say about Jane. It was ironic when I was driving down tonight, had the radio on, and Culture Club was singing, "Don't Want to Be Yet Another Brick in the Wall." And Jane was not a brick in the wall, she was sometimes a keystone.
Very nice.
I need that later, not for this. Sorry. I didn't designate, I didn't have time. Thank you. Hi, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408-208th Avenue, Northeast in Summamish. And I am giving agenda and non-agenda comment tonight. So for my non-agenda, I wasn't able to attend the first week of January because I had the cold and cough that my husband had, so I watched from home what I could, but I was not able to see your whole four-hour meeting. So I tried to view it today, and it did not actually come up. It brings up the screen, but it just sends it to an error. But I was able to catch about the last hour and a half, because it plays on TV 21, so I was able to see the end of the meeting. But it would be nice if those are working. The other thing is, is when it has David Pyle talking about the great things like solar access, it doesn't have the date, it just says Planning Commission. So unless you happen to know that it was that meeting, you don't actually know. So it'd be nice when they put the banner on, like I think when the city council meetings are, and it has like, January whatever, it would be cool if you could do that. And then just one other little thing, and I know this came up. I spoke with Sarah today, because I was able to email my thing in. But the actual agenda, when you pull it up, and I pulled the revised one up on the back, it says, "If you want to send something in, send it to Kevin Johnson," and he's not around anymore. So whoever has the template for this needs to change it, because even I didn't know what to do for sure. So, those are my updates. And then I did speak for three minutes on, just general, at the city council meeting. And what I read was called "How to Build Community." It was off a greeting card I had purchased. And I did have a number of city council members that were interested in it. I heard from somebody on the Planning Commission, and I had some public people that were interested in it. And I'm not sure if it's copyrighted, because it's been printed by somebody, so I've ordered copies of that, and I'll be sharing that with you guys at future meetings, including city council and Planning Commission. And anybody interested, I've ordered enough copies. So, thank you. When I learned, when I ordered it, there's a "How to Build Community," and then there's a "How to Build Global Community" one as well.
Thank you, Mary.
As Paul is working his way up there, I have to correct myself. It was Pink Floyd, "That Did Another Brick in the Wall." Apologize.
Yes, it was. Good evening.
Go ahead, Paul.
Hi there, Planning Commission. Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. I tonight am going to another meeting that's important, leaving here at 7:30. So if you're not finished by then, I just wanted to give a short comment that sort of spans some non-agenda and a little bit about agenda. My partner in the town center, Richard Berg, many of you know, he passed away the first of last month. He was about 87, and he had a wonderful life, was very healthy until the last couple days, just awesome. We spent a lot of time together over the last five years. And he used to joke, or his son used to joke, who is about my age. My dad has forgotten more than what most people will ever know. True. He was a pretty amazing guy. And he worked, and I stutter on this, but I'd like to say it. He worked for about 10 years for the senior, for Jack Benaroya. And he worked in, he was a holistic manager from land acquisition to working with cities to doing construction, and built many of the buildings in Seattle and the Kent Valley. And he jokes that he helped Jack build his first $100 million, which was back in the late 1960s. So that's a fair chunk of change. One of Dick's favorite statements was one he learned from Jack. It's not who's right, it's what's right. And specifically, I call this out for something Commissioner Mark Baughman and I have talked about. And we aren't quite in sync, but I think we can be in sync on what's right. Murray Franklin talked about three plats they did, and I emailed Todd Levin and got a copy of the thing that he sent the city. And my advice is that for this interim regulation, we take a large sample of plats, 10 or 20, that have come in the last couple years, and to apply these new regulations to them. Because what Murray Franklin found out, and I'm not saying they're right, this is just what he sent me, a side-by-side comparison. One plat, the old way, had 14 lots, which is now 11 under the new regs. One had 21, which is now 18. One had 13, that is now 10. I would vet his work, and I just suggest that we, the city, take 10 to 20 plats that came in under the old regs, apply the new regs, and figure out what's right, not who's right.
Thank you, Paul. And Paul mentions that he needs to leave at 7:30, and we also have a 7:30 stop for staff. So, we will wrap up by 7:30 tonight. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight on a non-agenda item? Okay. Non-agenda public item or public comment is now closed. We'll move on to old business. And tonight, we will discuss the Development Regulations Update Workshop. This is the workshop number four. And tonight, we will review the code regulations that staff has worked on after our last meeting that I was not in attendance at, but the commissioners gave some really good input on the regulations. And so now, looks like they've been able to interpret that into code. I don't know how. It's pretty awesome.
So, thank you Chair Collins. Good evening, or late good afternoon, I guess. Jeff Thomas with Community Development. David Pyle with Community Development. Of course, Sarah Steery with Community Development as well, keeping David and I in line. So, a couple of quick opening comments, and I'm actually going to turn it over to David to walk you through our offerings that have been in process since your last meeting on January 3rd. The first comment, just real quick, in response to the public comment here at the top of the meeting. Ms. Victor's comments will certainly pass those couple of things along to our IT folks, to, or to our city clerk perhaps, who knows? And try and get those remedied, so we're all square up there. Second thing, just letting the record maybe reflect, I think Mr. Stickney's comments were perhaps on agenda items as opposed to non-agenda items, so we'll just point that out to, again, just make sure we're straight. So, your last touch of the Planning Commission on this subject was two weeks ago, on January 3rd. At that time, David Pyle walked you through a list of items that you provided some really good feedback on, asked some really good questions, and also provided some direction to staff to go about our work here over the past few weeks. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to come back with you, to come back to you with some draft code language for you to take a look at, that will really serve as the foundation of your public hearing on January 31st. Two weeks from tonight, you'll have a public hearing, you'll deliberate, and then hopefully vote on a recommendation to the city council on these development regulations. So, with that, I don't think there's much else. I'm gonna turn it over to David, and he's queued up and ready to go to start walking you through this.
Good evening, Council. Make sure this is on. It's on, go. Yes. I have two computers over here, so I'm trying to manage it. Good evening, Planning Commission members. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. If you recall where we left off on January 3rd, you had given us some direction as to what to include for consideration in drafting permanent development code updates, changes to the development code here in the city. We've done that. We've included those regulations, as Jeff alluded to. And we had prepared those and created a matrix, which is titled "The Development Regulations Update Code-Drafting Matrix." It was included as Exhibit 1 with the packet for tonight. Within that matrix, there, it includes a topic, the direction from the commission, it includes the original code, so what the old code was prior to the interim development regulations being passed, and it includes the proposed code language. So, if you look through the columns, you'll note what was originally included in the code, and then you can contrast that with what is being proposed. There's a whole host of number of ways to present this. Some might prefer it in strike draft, some might prefer it in a clean version after strike draft is applied, some might prefer it to be highlighted. It just depends on the person. So it's hard for us to prepare it in each way that is customized for each individual per their preference. So this is one way that we're able to show the clean version from what it was before to what it is being proposed as. Also, note that on the city's website, if you go to the development code through the website, you can actually access Title 21A, Title 16. And those are the versions of the code that were in place prior to the interim development regulations. The interim development regulations have not been codified and updated through code publishing yet. So if you're curious what the code reads in its base today without the interim development regulations being applied, highly recommend going to the city's website, accessing the code. That's one good way of finding out what it currently says, if you're interested in seeing what is being done. Another one is if, over the next couple weeks before the public hearing, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. Happy to walk you through this, and what is being done, and what was previously existing, and what is proposed to be changed. Many of the questions that I did receive were good ones, there were also some that were related to items that were already in the code. Some of those were not planning to change. Those potentially could be a Phase 2 cleanup after the concepts are fully integrated. So with that, I'll start the presentation. The primary focus of this meeting, again, is on the code language and the concepts. The secondary focus is on the numeric settings. So again, you know, think of a numeric setting as a dial. You could turn it back, you know, one way or the other, if you're interested in a refinement. We are interested in that feedback. If you think a setback is too big, or a facade height is allowed to be too tall, definitely comment on that. We would prefer that the commission agree on guidance that you're giving us, as it's hard for us to make changes when one individual commissioner is asking us to do something. The others might not agree, and it's not very efficient for us to proceed constantly changing the code back and forth when there's disagreement on the commission. Public hearing will be held on January 31st, so in two weeks. Following the public hearing, that same evening, we'll be asking you to deliberate and to vote on a motion of recommendation to the city council, if we're able to get through the public hearing proceeding. So, as I walk through each of these slides, each of the numbers and topic areas corresponds to the number and topic area or issue on the matrix. So if you have that in front of you, I also am able to toggle back and forth between the presentation and the matrix. So if you have a question, I'm happy to jump to the matrix, so we can take a look at what you're asking. It would be preferred if we could make it through the presentation and then field questions. I think that might be most efficient for us. So, at that point, we could go back to any sections that someone has a question on, and that would enable us to orient all of you to all of the changes that were made to the code prior to asking questions, if that works.
Yeah.
If you have a question in the moment, I guess, you know, we'll work with it, but would prefer to hold those to the end. The first item on the matrix was density rounding. And the old code had allowed for rounding up of partial units that were over .5. So if you had .51 units, you would round up to the next whole number. We amended the language to, I guess, round differentially for different types of projects. We included in the code language that for, let me go down a hair here, for subdivisions, where the project was resulting in 10 or more whole units of density before rounding fractions, that if the project had more than .51 units, that it's rounded up. For short subdivisions, so that is for development proposals that resulted in fractions with nine or fewer whole units before rounding, that if you had .71 or greater, you would round up. So for those projects that were smaller, where you might notice the additional unit because of the size of the project, you have to have a higher fraction before you actually are granted that additional unit. We also created an incentive that allowed for a different rounding decimal point when a project is using, at least 25% of the total units are townhomes or duplexes. And this is in response to the comment that the city has a lot of one type of housing. We're lacking some additional diversity in our housing choices. And that what this might do is promote the inclusion of that extra unit in the form of a duplex. And it might allow for a builder to be able to integrate that into a development where you might not even notice it, as a result of some of the design criteria for duplexes and townhomes that are already included in our code. So what would happen here is if you were a builder and you were proposing, say you had enough land that would get you to 5.25 units, and you were going to include, say, two of the units were a duplex, then you would actually be able to round up to another whole number and get another unit out of that. So that makes something more financially attainable or feasible for a builder. And we feel that this relates back to many of the comments that we've heard from the commission on the issue of density rounding. The next issue is setbacks. What we did with setbacks, and this one is probably the more complex one of all of the issues we'll be talking about tonight. What we did with setbacks is, traditionally, the code had had one set of setbacks, or one type of setback that applied to all structures in the city. And what we did was, we took a look at changing our system of setbacks to identify a setback that generally applies to all structures, a setback that applies to primary single detached dwelling units, and then also a different setback that applies to detached accessory dwelling units. So what this does is, if you wanted to build, say you were a homeowner and you were doing a renovation in your backyard, and you wanted to build a trellis and an outdoor kitchen or a pool house or something, there would be a generally applicable structure setback that would apply to those amenities that you're constructing in your rear yard. If you were a property owner and you were building a new home, or you were doing a renovation addition to your existing home, that there would be a setback that applies to your primary single detached dwelling unit, which is your home. Then there would finally be, if you were a property owner wishing to build a detached accessory dwelling unit less than 1,000 square feet in size, per the code that exists today, we would put, create a different category that would apply a different setback to that detached accessory dwelling unit. And the idea there is that you can fine-tune the numbers. So for the detached accessory dwelling unit, for example, if you wanted to promote some additional detached accessory dwelling units in the city, you could adjust the setbacks that uniquely apply to detached accessory dwelling units for the purpose of incentivizing or facilitating some additional units of that type being built in the city. So the idea here is that we're able to treat different types of structures differently with different setbacks, so that we don't end up with, the scenario that I've heard is, large homes built on small lots that are right up against the property line with a minimal setback. We also looked at increasing the setback on the front yard in certain areas, in an effort to address the placement of a structure along an arterial street, those types of things. So there's, there was a lot of thought put into that. So I'm anticipating there will be some questions on this after the presentation. I'd be happy to go back to this one and walk you through how it works. The next one is with regard to adjustment of setbacks. The code has historically had a section in it regarding adjustment of setbacks. The code itself admittedly is slightly unclear as to how this process works, whether it is something that requires it be done in conjunction with a Type 2, 3, or 4 process, or whether it could be done by the director with a building permit. As part of the Interim Development Regulations Phase 2, Ordinance 2018 471, we did make some adjustments to the language related to adjustment of setbacks, clarifying that it could be done administratively. We did talk about that with the commission, and the commission indicated that they were interested in limiting the opportunity for setbacks to be adjusted at the building permit level. So what we've done is, we've amended the language here to make it very clear that we can adjust setbacks, however, it must be done in conjunction with a Type 2, 3, or 4 process, which requires public notice. We also clarified in the language that any adjustment done through this process under 21A, 25100, requires public notification. So what that means is that we're already doing a public notice for a Type 2, 3, or 4 process. So say you're doing a reasonable use exception for a piece of property that is highly encumbered by a critical area. What this means is that if you were also proposing an administrative adjustment of setbacks as part of the process, that you can't decide later in the process that now you want to suddenly add to the mix in an adjustment of setbacks. That has to actually be included in the public notice that's sent out from the beginning of the project. So we tried to clean up the language. We felt that the language in the code that we inherited was not clear at all, and we felt we could do better. So some of the changes here were related to that. There was one other change that was added at the request of the commission, and this is added in the form of a footnote to the zoning controls table. And this is regarding adjustment of a side and rear setback when an agreement has been reached between property owners. So the commission was interested in some language where if there were two property owners sharing a line, and one of the property owners was trying to do in addition to their home or build a new home, and there was a reason for them to need to move closer to the line than the setbacks would allow, that if they entered into agreement with their neighbor, and that agreement was recorded on the title of both of the properties and ran with the land, that there would be reason for us to allow for a reduction down to a minimum. The minimum cap is set at 5 feet. It's also stated in the code that this shall not cause for a conflict to occur with other adopted construction codes. That could mean drainage requirements, that could mean building code separation, fire separation, some of the things that Commissioner Brooks raised regarding fire separation. So we did try to include in that language a restriction that says you can't reduce a setback when it is in conflict with another code. So that's in there as well. When I say it also made conforming code amendments, this means that oftentimes we change a section of code, and there are tentacles, if you will, that reach out into the entirety of the code, and we have to chase those down and also make some corrections there. So while we might be focusing on just one specific discrete section of code, there are times when there are other adjustments that are being made further out in the code that really don't change the outcome. We're just trying to make sure that we're consistent across the code with what we're The next one is building height. And what this is, is this is consistent with the interim development regulation that was passed. We clarified that building height is measured in the city based on average existing grade. We also made conforming code amendments, as previously described. Those were pretty simple regarding citations around building height and how it's measured. The next one is building facade. And this one is regarding restricting large walls that might be opposing a property line and might present a character blemish to a neighbor, or a problem with their access, solar access, or with just sort of a change, privacy, et cetera. So what we did was, we added language restricting building facade height to 40 feet unless the facade is interrupted by architectural modulation or design amenities. There are some details in that section. It's footnote 20 to the table. You'll see that we tried to be pretty clear about what we're looking for, so that if somebody was trying to build a wall that is taller than 40 feet on, say, a sloping site, where the grade change from the street level to the backyard level, or the opposite, might cause for a large wall to be built, because the average existing grade of the site is such that, because of the slope, you could get up to, say, a 50-foot wall that might occur in one place. And we want to make sure that when there's a wall of that type, that we're providing some relief to the neighbors, that there isn't just this large structure right there. So that was the objective there. The next one is regarding mass grading. The code historically had not restricted the amount of cut and fill that could occur on properties. The interim regs included a first approach, or I guess, the interim regs included a change that restricted the amount of cut and fill in an effort to minimize mass grading. The proposed permanent regulations are somewhat different in that we have included some exceptions to that. The idea here is that we're really trying to minimize fill. The feedback that we got from the commission was, we would prefer to minimize fill. We would also like to put some limits on cut. Some of the exceptions are regarding utility vaults, roads, foundations, basements would be included in foundations. So, in this case, it's pretty consistent with what was previously in the interim development regs. There were some minor adjustments made. So we can get into more detail on that if you'd like. The next one is regarding fence heights. This one has caused for some discussion here regarding the, whether 8 feet is excessive, or whether 6 feet, it should be capped at 6 feet. So what we did was, we changed the code from what the interim reg had in it to allow for an increase in fence height from 6 feet to 8 feet along the side or rear property line, for a linear run of no more than 30 feet for any one of those setbacks, when an agreement has been reached with a neighbor, and there is a notice recorded on the title, or an agreement recorded to the title, that includes a maintenance agreement. So who's to maintain it, et cetera. So, the idea here is that, in that rare circumstance where we really might need So the idea here is that in that rare circumstance where we really might need a fence that's a little bit taller than six feet, a building permit would be required, an agreement would be required with the neighbor. You'd be limited to a 30-foot run, you'd be limited to eight feet in height, and you would be required to have that agreement with the neighbor recorded to the title of the property. Now, I still think this is an important tool to have in our code. It's highly unlikely that we'll really see this used very often because of how difficult it is to actually attain that. And also, as Commissioner Brooks raised during the meeting, the last meeting, it is really expensive to build an eight-foot tall fence. So we don't really anticipate seeing this used very often, but we have had some circumstances here where this would have been a great tool to have in the code. The next one is regarding parking. And this one requires one additional parking space be provided for each new lot created through the subdivision or short subdivision process. And it provides a hierarchy of preference as to where the parking space will be provided. So the hierarchy goes that it be provided on the public or private street through design, that the designers can then look at ways to provide bulbouts or stagger the driveways in a manner that allows for parking to be established. If the designers can show that it's difficult for them to do that, then they can next look to putting it on a HOA shared piece of property that's managed by the HOA. That could be, you know, the top of a vault, a parking area that's also shared to be used for a rec space or something on the property. I have seen those built and be functional and usable. The third option would be is that the parking space be provided in the driveway of each new home being built that services each new lot. So the importance there is that we're really trying to make it usable public parking. Secondarily, we're trying to make it usable neighborhood parking or development parking. And thirdly, we're trying to just account for some additional parking spaces in some of these subdivisions where we have received complaints and had to diffuse conflicts between neighbors when they've moved into homes, and one of the neighbors might have, say, teenage drivers that are parking inappropriately in the division. So we're really trying to make our neighborhoods more usable for their residents. The next one is regarding street frontage. In the past, the code had not required a minimum amount of street frontage. The interim development reg required that each new lot created through subdivision and short subdivision include 30 feet of street frontage on a public street. The proposed development reg is that each new lot created through subdivision or short subdivision process would include a requirement that it provide 30 feet on average of public or private street frontage with no less than 20 feet of frontage, but that the frontage be averaged through all the lots in the division. So you could go up or down in the size of the frontage, depending on how you're designing it, but that no lot could be less than 20, but the sum of all, or the average of all the lots has to be 30. So the idea there, it's a little different than what the interim reg said. The interim reg required public street frontage. What this does is it requires public or private street frontage. The idea here also is that if you were to be attempting to design a flag lot, say you had one existing parcel and you wanted to divide it into two, and you wanted to create a new lot in the back of an existing built front lot, you could have what I call the flag pole, which could be 20 feet wide, which is where the driveway would go that would service the back lot. So you could have, the main lot would be, you know, if you were to try to average it to 30, you'd have 40 for the main lot, and you'd have 20 for the back lot, and on average they'd be 30. So, and then they could actually tie into a private street. So the way that works is it's simplified from requiring public street frontage. It is fairly difficult and complex for a designer to design all new lots created to have public street frontage. Private street frontage is definitely attainable. We feel that this is a step back, a step back in restriction, meaning that it provides the functionality that we're looking for, but it doesn't provide, it doesn't make some projects unbuildable due to the design requirement that they have 30 feet of street frontage on a public street. The next one was one that was requested by one of the members of our audience here. And this one was where we amended Title 16 to require that any development or clearing and grading activity located within a defined regulated critical area or associated regulatory buffer requires a clearing and grading permit. We also made some conforming code amendments. This is a fairly simple one. The code was trying to achieve that in its prior form. We feel that this clarification is useful for us because we now can tell a property owner or an applicant that, hey, you really need a permit to do that. So I feel it's a good correction. Many other cities have this requirement, and it's very useful for the staff. There was another ask that we consider how building segments, or excuse me, how daylight plane might apply to our code, how we could integrate a daylight plane concept into our code. So we took a look at how to do that. One of the ways that that would work, if you recall, one of the complexities that we stated during the January 3 meeting was that on sites with topography, which we have many here in the city, so if you had a sloping property, if you were attempting to apply a daylight plane wherein you measured the daylight plane based on 15 feet above grade at a setback line, if you will, that that would have to follow the topography as you step down in a lot. So imagine that you were over that, you know, I want to say Husky Stadium, and you were attempting to board the light rail train to head into downtown Seattle. If you were going down one of the escalators, there's a canopy over that. And if you were riding down that canopy, that canopy, or down the escalator, the canopy follows the topography or the contour of the escalator. So what happens is the daylight plane would do the same thing on the property because it is 15 feet up at a 45-degree angle. It would conform to the topography and follow the topography. That is the complexity that I cited in application. So what we've done is we've taken a look at, for a slope site, what if we were to include the concept of building segments in the code? Other cities use this concept. This is where you have a slope property where you might have multiple floor plates in a building. So you might step down and build the foundation in a tiered manner that sort of follows the topography but is keyed into the hill. So what this does is that any floor level that is separated by four feet or greater that is larger than 200 square feet is considered a segment. So you could design your home that way to take advantage of the topography, and each building segment is then measured on its own for the purpose of establishing existing grade. So what would happen is you would take points. So the way we measure building height currently with average finished grade, and we would, and we're proposing, I guess, excuse me, one step back. The way we measure building height today under the interim development regulations using average existing grade is we take the building and we draw the next closest rectangle or square as we can around the building. And each of the segments of that rectangle or square, we take a point at the midpoint of that segment, that's an elevation of the existing grade where that fits. We average those out, and that gives us the average existing grade. We then measure up 35 feet from that elevation. So what happens here is with segments is you create a square or rectangle for each segment that you're measuring, and the elevation of that segment is established. Then what you would do is you would apply a daylight plane to that, and we'll show you an example here. So first of all, the concept of building segments is useful for properties that are sloped. It allows an additional tool for builders to design a home that actually provides some additional volume and space on a site that's sloping. It also allows for some more diverse and interesting architecture because of how architects are designing homes to take advantage of that. We've prepared some code language, and we won't focus on this so much. We'll get instead to the concept of a daylight plane using a segment. So if you were to design the code to say that a daylight plane is measured based on 20 feet above the average existing grade of the structure, at a point, the daylight plane begins at a point that is located 20 feet above the average existing grade of a structure at a line that is 45 degrees to that point, if that's clear, and the building would have to fit inside that envelope. So the blue line here is segment one. That's one of the lower segments in the building. And the roof line and the building volume of segment one would have to fit inside the blue dotted line there. The green line would have to fit inside the green dotted line. The red line would have to fit inside the red dotted line. That looks something like this if you were to take a profile of it. What that does is it allows for the daylight plane to be applied with topography by using building segments. So we feel that this is something that we could apply in our code. It's definitely more complex than what we do today. It would definitely require training for staff. It would require public information handouts. It would require coaching on the part of the staff with architects and designers. It is something we could do. Other cities do similar things. However, we do want to be clear that it is on the more complex side, and there are likely many individuals who would be confused by this. So it is something that's in our potential toolkit, but it does come with some additional And this shows sort of the idea behind a building segment, say, with a flat roof. Just the idea that if you're on a slope site, you might want to create building segments and a floor plan that's separated by these segments. It's something that's fairly common in single-family construction in other cities. So I guess the question we have tonight, and we're going to have to get to this right now, is do you want us to include this in the code language that we bring forward on January 31 for your consideration as part of the public hearing? So that is the end of the presentation that I have. I'm happy to back up to any one of the issues. I know that some of these issues are probably fairly simple and may not have any questions. Some of them are more complex and may actually generate a few questions. So happy to go wherever you want.
Thank you, David and Jeff. Excellent presentation. It's a lot of information. So we'll see how we want to work through it. Is there, are there any sections that you guys want to start with?
Let's start with the daylight plane, the most easiest of them, right? So, you know, the concept of daylight plane, I don't have any engineering or civil engineering or even construction background. Can you help us understand what it is going to gain us by implementing this regulation for daylight plane?
So what it will gain, or what it would achieve is a limit on building envelope protruding directly up along a setback line. What it does is, once you get to a height of, say, 20 feet, so you could achieve two stories along that setback line, it would require that the building be stepped back with a roof line before you continue up to a third story. So in instances where we're seeing large volume homes on small lots with smaller footprints that are going vertical, because we do have a 35-foot building height limit, and if you're on a sloping lot, you could achieve three stories. What it does is it limits the volume of a home along a side or rear property line. The way I've drafted the language only applies to a side property line, because in this case, the rear setback is already large enough that it provides that separation and relief. And what this does is, along a side property line where there might be less of a setback than the rear, it allows you to go to two stories, and then you have to push the wall back before you continue up. If you recall the Anacortes example, they had a graphic where it showed how you would achieve, theirs was set at 15 feet at the setback line. So what that allowed for is really just one story before you had to actually move it back. By pushing it up to 20 feet, you could achieve two stories before you had to push it back. Again, that's the dial. That 15 to 20 feet is the dial. If you were trying to achieve one story before pushing it back, you would drop the number down. If you wanted to allow for two stories, you could leave the number where it is.
Go ahead. I'll wait.
I'll try to be quick, and let's see, it was yesterday, no, yes, yesterday. My wife and I took a walk around Green Lake in Cuhane. And it was very interesting. I was sitting there, and all of a sudden, in this one mile or one and a quarter mile loop, the, there were buildings that were two to three stories high but weren't very close to each other, maybe 30, 40 feet apart. And there was trees on the lakeside, or it's not near the lake, but on the loop side. I guess I'm having a little trouble now, and I have to think about this. You know, is this a shadow plane? Because the sun is a different place during the year, during the day. And as you mentioned, we have the backyard setbacks, okay. I think some of the people that live in those houses probably are fine with not seeing much daylight strike the ground. That's all I'm saying. And we have to realize that Cuhane was a four-site planned community, and when I wore younger man's clothes, I used to run 5Ks back in 91 back there. It was just strange. Then I ended up living there, I mean, near there. So, yeah, I'm just, to me, it looked like those people probably didn't care. I don't know.
So I just want to make sure to be clear that that was not really included in, the segments is a new topic, right, that we haven't seen before? So I-
That's correct.
Right, okay. One of my questions, I guess, in looking at it is, well, first, I think, I like the concept. I'm concerned, just as you said, that it's complex, both to utilize and also to articulate to people, which means it may not get much traction, it may not get anywhere, so it may not be worth the effort. I'm also curious, do you have an opinion about the likelihood that somebody will actually utilize this? I mean, I'm trying to think about, if you look at your blue, green, red, little sketch there, it seems to me what this does is it takes that piece that could be, I don't remember which is which, could be in the front, and kind of moves it to the back so that then the neighbor has access to some light, rather than keeping that taller piece in the front, and now you're casting a shadow on the lower part of the grade in the front. And I like that concept to give people, you know, even if somebody's fine right now not seeing the sun, the next person that comes along might wish they could get a little sunshine. And I think that was the original concept behind this. I do think, though, it's, I understand that, but it is a little bit complicated to deal with. So I'm not sure, when it gets to be that complicated, how practical it is to use.
So with regard to just simply the building segment component of it, in applying building segments to building height, you might see that there is more restriction on the volume just simply by using a requirement that any floor plate that is separated by four feet from the adjacent floor plate and is greater than 200 square feet in size, then triggers a reduction of building height for that floor plate because, say, someone drops down eight feet to another level, and they put a staircase in, or six feet or four feet, or whatever it is, then your corresponding building height for that segment would also be dropped down on your roof line. So there's that side to it. Currently, our code only looks at the exterior box around the building. So you could do all sorts of things to achieve additional volume inside the building on a slope site, which maybe that's a good thing. I'm not- I'm not trying to judge it either way. I'm just noting that you might end up with a boxier, more voluminous building if you were to apply the current standard in the way we measure this versus if you were to include a daylight plane, the result, or excuse me, a building segment component. The difference would be is that on sites that are sloped, and I have some example properties that I could send you, that you can see some photographs of, where if they'd applied a building segment to that, the building would look very different than it looks now.
Are there any rules and restrictions about what defines a segment? I mean, can a garage be a segment? Can they be uneven? I mean, it seems like it's the separation and the 200 square feet.
Yeah, so it would include the garage. And what it's doing is it's looking at volume. The idea there is that if you drop the floor down and you create additional volume within the box of the building, you should also be dropping down the corresponding roof height over that segment.
I feel like I need more visuals. I like parts of this. I like the idea that it may lend itself to creating different-looking homes in some areas. I think one of the things we're seeing is the same home reproduced over and over and over again, just with different paint color. So I like the idea that it might excite or it might force people into coming up with alternative building design. So that interests me. I don't like to think that we might be creating more and more work for our city staff. That's the part that I don't like about that, if it's very, very difficult or, you know, overly difficult to enforce or to educate. But I do like anything that will kind of create a different kind of housing options and housing design to our city, because I think that is something we're missing. So I feel like, though, I need, and we had some examples last time, but because I don't come from a construction background either, just like you're saying, Rituja, that I need kind of more visuals too, when we're talking about segments and dropping planes down and things like, kind of need a little bit more visual on it. But I kind of like this idea, though, that we might get some different houses out of it, different design elements out of it.
I definitely agree with Roshin and Rituja, because even though I may have a little bit of construction background, I don't have enough to make any judgment on segments and daylight plane. So, I don't feel qualified to be able to make that decision, you know, in two weeks. That's kind of how I feel. But I do agree that, you know, maybe it could have some advantages. But then, I also worry that there's just too many regulations on top of one another all at once. It's like, you know, setbacks, density rounding, parking, fences. Doing all this at once is scary, I don't know, to me. But anyway, I would be in favor of holding off and not making it part of the public hearing. But that's just my two cents.
Can I just add two quick things as I'm sitting here thinking about it, since we've just seen this? It seems in some respects like it could be helpful with the limitations on mass grading, because you're going to have more home sites that'll have slopes. So you could, in theory, build homes that have more square footage and still comply. However, the downside is that this type of design will result in a more expensive framing system, more expensive house in general, which is not necessarily great. So there's kind of pros and cons. It does seem like it's worth more consideration.
And I just, so is this, if we proceed with that, would this be applicable only to single-family homes, or would that apply to other kinds of construction as well or buildings?
It would apply to all construction. So if you were requiring that building segments be considered in how we measure building height as a requirement, that if your, say, floor plate was four feet different for a portion of the building and it was greater than, say, 200 square feet, those are, again, dials that could be moved, that you then would be required to apply a building segment average existing grade calculation to that structure, whether it was a commercial building outside of the town center or a new single-family residence outside of the town center, or an apartment building outside of the town center.
And another question that I had on this was, so, you know, from an engineering perspective and from an architect's perspective, do they already use some of the components that, you know, I mean, I don't think they want to build something that is going to cast a shadow over somebody else's house. So do they already incorporate these features when they're actually, you know, drawing out a house, for example, or, you know, constructing the blueprint? Like, do architects already consider the daylight plane when they're in the process of-
Like in a subdivision, you mean?
Yeah, in a subdivision, yeah.
We don't require it, so unless they're doing it on their own in their office, which I suspect is probably not happening for most projects, it would not be considered. It's not a requirement that we have in the code prior to the interim regs, nor is daylight plane included in the interim regs.
Right, I understand it's not included, but I'm just asking from a design perspective, you know, there are certain things that, you know, people want to create a better product, and so they would just include that as part of their offering.
Some builders might consider it if they were, say, putting a rec space within the project, they would want to make sure that that has some sunlight. Custom home builders who are designing custom homes, who want to create a usable landscape, who are doing a really good service to their client, are going to be considering things like that. But it is less likely in mass-produced housing that it is something that is considered. More likely, that is trumped by things like stormwater and sewer connections and gravity. That's really one of the major considerations in designing homes.
You can drive around the city tomorrow and you'll see plenty of examples where they absolutely do not do that.
All right, what should we vote? I think David needs to know. Oh, sorry, Jeff.
So, I agree, I agree with David. That's a good thing, because we work together. But I also agree with Commissioner Baughman's comment that this, we may not be ready for this at this point. The good news, though, for the commission and for our city council is that this development code update project is going to be rolling multiple phases over the coming months, probably into 2020. There's a lot of other work that we have to do in the code, over and above just firming up these first set of development regulations that were subject to the emergency interim period. So, this is certainly a subject that, and I agree with Commissioner O'Farrell, having some additional graphics to study and, you know, analyze those and talk to the public about, I think, would be a good thing as well. So, you're certainly, on January 31st, after you have your public hearing, if you're not feeling ready to bring closure to this area of subject matter, this is certainly one subject matter that you could, including your recommendation to the city council that is studied further in a future phase, and we could spend some more time on it, so.
That's what I would be in favor of. Okay. Consensus?
I love it when people agree with me.
Okay, Roshin or Rituja was right. That one was easy.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so next, should we go with density rounding? Okay, I'm going to take that as a yes. Okay, so, actually, Commissioner Baughman had sent out some questions this afternoon. Does it, do you want to go through those?
I did review this fairly late last night, so there could be confusion. Why don't we, I'd suggest if we just go through it, and I'll try to pick up the ones that I think are worth talking about. Some of this is just little stuff that I was pointing out David might need to be cleaned up in the language, so.
The first thing, actually, that stuck out to me is the averages. Because when I watched the meeting, you guys were kind of in consensus that maybe the averages were too complicated. But, I don't know, you'll probably get through that. So why don't you take the lead and you, that's just one thing I thought.
That was one of my questions. I had thought, I had recalled that we had decided to take out the averages, or some version of that. And it looks like it's almost identical to what we talked about, which I was confused by that.
Moving from density rounding to setbacks, then?
Yeah, that's under the setbacks section.
I'm sorry about that.
Well, I didn't have any comments on the density rounding, so.
I don't either. No.
Yeah, I had a state conference with David and he went over some of the questions, clarifications that I had yesterday. So I still have some remaining, which I emailed to you this morning, but we can go through them as it comes. So I don't have any questions for density rounding right now.
I do think one thing in the description, and probably when you present it, that it kind of says, when it results in whole numbers of nine or less and whole numbers of 10 or more. And so, I had to sit here and think for a minute. When you get to 9.7, what does that mean, right? Because it kind of, it sort of creates this, it feels like there's this 10 and above and nine and below, but what happens in between nine and 10? I think just as part of the description to be helpful to point out.
Yeah, so I tried to get at that and with, by saying, for subdivision proposals with density calculations resulting in fractions with 10 or more whole units of density before rounding fractions. So the idea there is if you have 10.01, 10.99, any of that, it's still 10, so that puts you in that box. That was the idea, is that we're not considering the fractions in order to get there. I don't know if that clarifies that for you?
Yeah, but 9.9 is still nine.
Yes, and that's what, I'm just trying, by saying that, we said it resulted in nine or fewer units before rounding. So if you got 9.9, you're in that box. Whereas if you had 10, 10.01, you're in the other box. If that, maybe there's, I'll take a crack at trying to redraft that, so it's clearer.
I think it's more of just a description thing to avoid questions.
Yeah, I could put in there, for example, if you had 10.65, you would be put in this category. I could say that.
Yeah, I think the only question in my mind was between 9.0 and 10.0, because it's kind of, I understand, but I think maybe it may be helpful to provide a little more description, or at least in presentation, provide a little more description.
And this would come with a user guide. So we're very aware that many of these concepts will require the creation of a user guide and an example. So we'll have a user guide that will walk a potential code user through it, and then it will include an example density worksheet that someone filled out, for example, so that someone could see how it works.
Okay, very good. So let's go to setbacks next. And Mark, go ahead.
Okay, just a few little things. You know, minimum lot width, I guess I was curious, and this isn't a change, but where is that measured, or is that just an absolute minimum? Wherever the minimum is, that's the minimum?
It's measured by placing a circle within the lot. So it's actually in the measurement section. And it talks about placing a circle that is equal to the minimum lot width within the lot and excluding easements and things like that. So if you had an easement, that circle would have to fit outside of the easement. So that's already in the code. We could change that. It's a pretty good way of measuring it. The idea there is that the width of the lot is of a minimum that is adequate, barely adequate, to build a house. So if you had a lot, you want to build a house, you got 30 feet in width, that's the idea, or a driveway or something else that needs to be placed in the lot that at some point in the lot you have 30 feet.
Is there a reason in some of the definitions that you don't use the phrase property line? And I only say that because people are very familiar with that term, but it's not in here. Is there something I'm missing about why not?
It's in the term lot line. So the term lot line is defined, and, you know, I agree. So what happens is, by way of definition, is that if we're looking at lot line, rear yard, we would go back to, well, what is a lot line? And we look up what a lot line is. And a lot line says property line. Property line doesn't necessitate definition in the code. It's such a universal term. So, we use a term that is pretty, we consider it to be unique to the boundaries of a property, the lot line, the line of a lot.
I wondered if it's defined somewhere else that what the maximum height of an ADU is?
It is not. That was a great comment. If you think that we should add a height in the table to an ADU, accessory dwelling, it shall not exceed 15 feet in height. The question then becomes, and this is one that we talked a little bit about internally, is, so say you were building in your side or backyard a detached garage with an accessory detached dwelling unit on top of it. Well, what happens then? Would that not be permitted? Well, how would that apply? So we determined that under this code, the way it is drafted, that if you were building a detached accessory dwelling unit on top of a garage, that that would be considered as an accessory structure first and foremost, and it would be subject to the standard structure setbacks, not the detached accessory dwelling unit setbacks. So in that scenario, we might, I could define it in a way that calls out that for a standalone detached accessory dwelling unit that is nothing more than a detached accessory dwelling unit, you could get up to 15 feet in height, or 20, or whatever it is you want to set that at, right? But if you're building it in conjunction with another amenity, whether it be a pool house, an outdoor kitchen, a garage, some other amenity, that it be considered as a standard detached structure, not a detached accessory dwelling unit, you would still be allowed to build it up to 1,000 square feet in size for the living unit component, but you would be subject to a more restrictive setback.
Yeah, I think if we're going to allow the five feet, then we need to restrict the height. And like you said, then if it's incorporated with another structure, it doesn't really fall under the standalone, and so the five feet doesn't apply anymore.
And I can tweak the code to reflect that and include a height limit for a detached accessory dwelling unit if you'd like.
I think we should do that.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I think that's the right thing to do.
I don't know what the right number is. I think I suggested 15 feet, but I'm not sure if that's-
Whatever's enough to build a single-story accessory dwelling unit with a roof.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. So 15 feet can be seen as fairly restrictive in height when you're dealing with topography and other issues. I recall building something similar in my backyard and being fascinated by 15 feet and how do I make that work? Because the way I had the framing designed, there's no way I was going to meet the 15-foot limit.
And we don't want it to look like a box necessarily, so maybe go 20 feet.
We'll look and see, you know, we might have some plans for a single-story detached accessory dwelling unit somewhere in our files, and we could pull them out and see if, what they were building it at and get an idea of how that worked. We could also ask our plans examiners who see this stuff and understand framing with prescriptive code, because you wouldn't want to be custom engineering necessarily a detached accessory dwelling unit. You probably would want to follow prescriptive code to build that.
But I think also the purpose is to make sure that it's not creating too much mass that close to the property line. So we do need to think about being somewhat restrictive.
And the question then is, does that 15 feet apply to the ridge of a pitched roof the same as it applies to the rim of a parapet on a flat roof?
Okay.
So I guess I should know, but how does it apply when you build a single home?
We currently go to the highest point of the roof.
So then I think you should do the same thing for consistency.
Right.
Awesome.
I couldn't tell, I tried to track this and I got tired and couldn't keep doing it. On, where are we at? I'm under the table with the setbacks. There's an item on the next page at the bottom, number nine, that I, is that something that's existing in the code already, or is that a change? It looked unfamiliar to me and I struggled to understand. It says existing?
Existing.
Okay, never mind.
There were some conformance amendments that were made where we changed things like, where it had previously said street setback to front yard setback, but that is the extent to changes made in these other sections. So nine, for example, was existing. We did not change nine.
Okay. What about on the next page, number 16, which is the front yard?
Existing.
30%. Okay. For my part, I'm still struggling a bit with number 20, the 40 feet. I, it still seems like an awfully large number. And I know that we discussed that that's driven for reasons of slope lots, and I can think of many houses where they're, you know, it's on a downhill slope, and the backside of their house is probably taller. But 40 feet, I don't, I struggle with that a little bit, mostly because that's truly with a little bit of thaw, you can get four floors out of that. And I'm, I'm not so sure that we really need to have four-story anything. I don't know. Maybe if we put segments in, then that number could come down. But 40 feet feels like a number that's too big to me for facade heights.
One of the things we see is where there is dead space in a home that's built, where someone for aesthetic purposes does not want to have the post-imperial-style foundation look that you might see in more of a tropical climate, where insulation isn't really needed in the floor, where they might create a crawl area that is fairly large under a home and actually side it because of the climate here. And so that, that is also another scenario you might see, where there is a much lower portion of a home that actually has been sided around a larger crawl that would otherwise be like a post-imperial-type, type scenario. And that facade wall might include that area down below. So again, it's, it's some of the complexity of what we're looking at with full variation. And I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to constrain a property that is trying to find a way to make a home fit on a slope. We have a lot of slopes here. A lot of the properties that we have left that are existing lots are more difficult to build on. So I'm just trying to make sure that thought is put into that as well. I do see what you're saying, although please consider also that if you were to go to a 35 feet of the ridge of a roof from the foundation, or even from average existing grade, that that's still a pretty large wall right there that's just allowed today, or would be allowed even if you dropped it down to 35 feet. If you drop it down to 30 feet, then it would actually constrain a home more than the 35-foot height limit that's allowed.
So one question that I had asked, which is common through several parts of this, and there's probably an obvious answer, but I wasn't sure. There are several instances, whether it's the fences or the setbacks, where you're, the code describes two different properties and an agreement between the two to do something, whether that's a fence or whatever. And my question was, what precludes a developer who's developing 20 homes, that owns all those parcels, from just making an agreement that goes into the title on each of those parcels and moving on?
So, so say in the case of a subdivision where they're building homes, then they're, they're making an agreement between all of the property boundaries to just shrink them down to five feet?
They can arbitrarily do things, which I don't, that's not what this envisions. And I was trying to figure out if that could happen, and that's maybe not intended.
So you, you could re-draft that to say that, you know, existing developed properties, or where the one that's granting the permission is an existing developed property. So under that scenario, the only liability would be is where if somebody bought a piece of property that had enough space to divide it into two, and they divided it into two successfully, and then went ahead and executed an agreement to reduce the setbacks. But that's along the property line that they control, so what's the difference there if it's only occurring with one property? So you could do it that way, because what that would mean is that it only applies to instances where a property line is developed on one side or on both sides. So it would then work for someone who has an existing home who wants to do an addition, but they're feeling constrained, like they have no options, but they go talk to their neighbor, and their neighbor says, "Sure, yeah, we can do that. Let's, let's make it work. I'd like to participate in the design of what it looks like, because it's going to be closer to me, but let's make it work." And then neighbors talk, and we have wonderful neighborly things working here in the city, versus another scenario where you might have a vacant lot with an adjacent built lot, and the new, the vacant lot is oddly shaped and has not been built on because it's oddly shaped and difficult. And the owner of that, someone buys it and says, "I'd like to build a house there. I'm going to try and make this work." And they talk to their neighbor. Their neighbor says, "Sure, let's make it work." But what wouldn't happen is a subdivision that's occurring wherein you had, say, 10 lots, and that the builder was attempting to have all of the lot lines created through that subdivision agree with each other artificially, because they own all of them. That wouldn't happen in that scenario. So it would be purposely constrained only to those lots that are developed between two developed lots, or where one of, the one of the adjacent lot that's granting the permission is developed. We could do that.
Yeah. What I had thought of is if you could just describe it as two different property owners. But I just think there should be something so that somebody doesn't find a way to sneak around the intent.
So the different property owners is extremely tricky for us, because we have builders that create 20 different LLCs, and, and you can't trace it back.
Following up on that, and I'll try to be quick, but as a, some of the things you presented, like fences in these agreements between neighbors, in our country, we have a pyramid legal system where city-state, then federal overrides those. And Commissioner Baughman, it really got me thinking. We've all probably had association with neighborhood associations, homeowners. City rules would have to supersede anything that a neighborhood association had. So what I'm trying to figure out is, some associations might want to put a rule in, "You can't do this," but the city would have the override, and you could.
So...
With only, again, with just the two neighbors.
So, so in my experience, it works the opposite.
Yeah.
If, if there were a community covenant or restriction that was enforceable by the HOA, that the city rule would be, could be something that is more relaxed or more restrictive. If it's more restrictive, then the city rule overrides what the HOA requires. But if the HOA rule is more restrictive, then the HOA rule overrides what the city requires. It's what I call the finest filter catches the grain. It's, it's where you have a more restrictive rule, and whoever that entity is that's applying that is whomever is the one that ultimately controls the outcome.
I appreciate that, but I still, I know there's lawsuits out there on that subject.
A lot of those are related to some of the older covenants that you see on subdivisions that are related to race and other things that have been unwound. There's been some other categories that have been tested by the courts that I'm aware of, specifically regarding view covenants and other, other restrictions on the use of property or placement of structures. And my understanding, we'd have to get a legal analysis, is, is that those, those have been upheld by the courts, and that the HOAs can apply those to their, their neighborhoods.
The next one was the comment about the averaging, that I was thinking that we were going to take the averaging out of the, you know, the setback definitions. Is that, did you decide maybe that what was in there was okay, or?
I started looking at the language and how it was written, and I actually started to see some of the wisdom of, of the averaging when you were applying it to properties, especially with some of the comment that we heard from the commission regarding standardized placement of setbacks along lots that are too uniform, create sort of this homogenized appearance in neighborhoods. So if you allowed some flexibility by averaging, that you might actually see some more creative design of placement of homes, as opposed to this sort of rectangular 90-degree angle-type design. So including that in there is not a bad thing. Again, it's more complex, but I don't think it's so complex that we can't quickly get it right with staff through some additional public info handouts and some coaching with the applicants.
I did this the old-fashioned way. I printed it out.
No.
Go ahead.
If you have one in the meantime, go ahead.
There, there was one question that Commissioner Baughman had regarding why the R8 setback jumps up so abruptly. I wanted to point out that that was the setback, as I understand it, that was, if I can get this computer to come back online here. Just a sec. That was the setback, and I'm going to the table now, that, and I could show you what he was talking about, that had previously been included in the old version of the code. So if you look here on the table, I'm looking for the minimum side yard for detached primary dwellings, right here where it jumps from eight to 15 feet. So understand that we did not include a footnote 23 or a footnote 24 to this section here, because it only applies, 23 applies to R4 only, or 23 applies to R4 only, 24 applies to R6 only. And R8, the 15 feet, as I understand it, and we'll verify whether or not I'm right right now, was something that was in the original table with regard to the interim regs. So under the interim regs, we had included a 15-foot side yard setback for the R8. But I understand your comment now, because what we did there was that was the aggregate setback. So if you think there's a better number to include there than 15 feet, you know, the aggregate, I think the minimum was 7.5, but it had to be total of 15, minimum 15. So if you wanted us to include another number there, we could do that, or I could try to reinstate the aggregate for the purpose of that zone only. It's up to you. I could, you know, draft it either way.
I don't know that I have an opinion about that, but it does seem kind of odd that it jumps so dramatically right there. And I'm trying to picture what that might actually look like, and, you know, I'm not sure. Perhaps that'd be something to just target to study again in the next phase, to take a look and make sure that it makes sense.
So the intent with R8 zone is that it's a higher-intensity denser zone. So a lesser setback may be appropriate in that zone. The flip side to that is that you may want to have a larger setback when that abuts like an R4 zone, because you'd want to protect the lower-intensity zone from the higher-intensity zone. So, you know, we could, we could design it, we could look at designing it. I'll take a look at this. It may be a simple fix, that that is the setback that applies along any interior or any side or rear line that abuts a lesser, an R4 or lesser zone, but that then we apply a line that applies to any other R8, where it abuts any other R8 or an R6, that maybe it's a, maybe it's a five-foot setback, or something along those lines. And the idea there is that if it's abutting a similar zone, that, that the intent is that those lots are built to a higher density and intensity, so that it might warrant a smaller setback.
That makes sense.
So I had a question on the adjustment of setbacks. I know it's the next question, next section. So can you help me understand what that really means, and then how does it tie back to a footnote 23 in the setbacks? Because footnote 23 is specific to lot sizes that are dynamic. And I was wondering, how does that contrast with the adjustment of setbacks, where you can make adjustments, you know, you're not tied to a particular number? So what's the difference between the two?
So it depends on which type of adjustment you're talking about. If you're talking about an adjustment that is being done with a type 2, 3, or 4 action, that requires public noticing where there is a list of criteria around when and how you can reduce the setback, that's one category. If you're talking about, on the other side of it, a reduction of setback that's being done through an agreement with a neighbor, that's a different category. So first I'd ask which category you're referencing. If the adjustment is being done as a matter of a building permit with an adjacent neighbor, and you're recording an agreement where one of the lots is developed next door, right, according to how we would change that, if that's what you're asking, I could answer that. But if you're asking about an adjustment that is done with a type 2, 3, or 4 action, that's a different answer.
How about help me understand both?
So if you were proposing an adjustment of setback as part of a short subdivision or a subdivision, which is most likely the scenario if you were using that, that provision for type 2, 3, or 4 adjustment of setbacks, there is a list of criteria that would allow you to say, "Hey, I've got this weird geometry in this property. I'm trying to fit this last one or two lots in. I really need to adjust it in this limited circumstance. The code allows me to adjust up to, down to 30% of the main, the primary value." And what you would be doing is you'd be setting up your lot with your anticipated home product. So your size of your lot would be designed necessary to allow you to fit the size footprint you're trying to fit on the, on the site. And you might, with a few of the lots in the division, if it was a very complicated geometry scenario, be asking the staff to recommend, or the staff to approve, a reduction of setbacks by up to 30%, according to the criteria. That would then be something, if it were a short subdivision, where the staff would include that in the public notice, that says, "The applicant is requesting a reduction of setback in accordance with X, Y, and Z." Then with the decision, we would include in the notice, "The applicant has received an approval for setback reduction in accordance with X, Y, and Z." That would be appealable to the hearing examiner. So if you were a neighbor and you objected to that, you would be able to appeal that. Your recourse would be to go to the hearing examiner. It would also achieve what the city council had asked us with regard to adjustment of setbacks. It would provide public notice, because the note, the public would be aware that there is a proposal to reduce setbacks. The public would have opportunity to comment on that and to appeal it. That is the scenario where we would see that used. The other would be possibly with, say, a reasonable use exception, where you had a particularly challenging property, where the reasonable use exception process is a type 2 process. The reasonable use exception process is only an exception to Title 21A50. Title 1A21A50 is the city's critical areas rules. So a reasonable use exception process, many people are confused about this. It's, it doesn't, it's not carte blanche. You can't just propose whatever you want on the property. It only affords you a modification of standards related to critical areas. So a critical area buffer, a slope, a stream buffer, those sorts of things. It does not afford you any sort of deviation or variation to the zoning controls of the code under Title 21A generically. So you would then be allowed, as part of that process, to say, "Hey, I want to shoehorn the home into this corner of the lot, and I want to apply this under the criteria." We would then likely approve it, because you're attempting to avoid impact to the critical areas. So when there's a conflict in code, these types of relief valves or off-ramps afford a designer tools to make it work and to minimize impacts to things that are of a higher priority of protection, like critical areas. So that's that scenario. That's two examples. The other one would be in the case of a neighbor adjustment. So if you were building your home on a new lot, a vacant lot, or you were doing an addition to your home, these variable setbacks would apply based on the size of your home. So if you were proposing an expansion to a home that required a certain setback because of the volume of the home or the size of the home that you're dealing with, you could ask your neighbor, "Hey, the code requires this. I'd really like to reduce it down along our shared line. For these reasons, I'm willing to include these design amenities, or locate the windows in a way such that I've turned them 90 degrees to the property line, so that I'm not looking at, you know, down at you out of my house." You could, you could come up with an agreement of how it would be built, put some boundaries on it between the two neighbors. That would be recorded to the titles of the property. Then these setbacks that are prescribed here for that size home would be accordingly reduced down to a minimum of five feet, so long as they did not create a conflict with other codes.
Just a quick, as you were, thank you for the explanation. What burden does that put on staff to kind of keep up with these, these agreements and things like that? Because I've had some recent experience with just, you were talking about... I've had some recent experience with just, you were talking about covenants, and many times the building departments don't look at the covenants that are placed on, you know, whether their view or whatever, right? And so oftentimes it gets kind of, building permits get granted, and then these hard feelings start coming out. So I'm just wondering about what, how that works on the staff end of things.
Yeah, so just, just about covenants in general, you know, my direction to the staff is, is that we, we recognize covenants, but we don't enforce them. They're not, it's not a city regulation. It's something that is up to the property owner to ensure that they're meeting the requirements of the other restrictions on the property. Just like an easement, you know, we don't necessarily enforce someone's right to an easement. So, so, yeah, so I would say that, that it does create additional layer of complexity for us, although what we would do is we would apply the standard unless someone was proving to us that they had received a reduction through an agreement, right? So our default is always apply the standard. So if someone came in and, and wanted to do an addition to a home that already had received a reduction, and we were viewing it as a legal non-conforming structure, and they wanted to build along that line, we would ask them, you know, to apply the standard, or, or show us, they'd show us an agreement, and then, then we would say, okay, you have an agreement, here's how this proceeds. So we would not necessarily be mapping and cataloging to that degree these agreements. They would go with the building permits. They would be in the system. And we have, we're getting better at using our, our permit tracking system to, to keep records and to capture information and report out on different scenarios. So we would try to do that, but, you know, we, we would work as best we could with what we have.
Just to emphasize that, because that's an important point that David made, the first part of his answer, the city does not have the legal authority to enforce private covenants. So our legal authority is to enforce the city code, right? So any disputes over private covenants, it's a civil matter, either between two property owners or between a homeowners association and a property owner and so forth. So that's, that's a really important point to make sure we all understand.
Okay, so I'm just thinking about time, because it's 6:40. We need about 30 minutes for public comment tonight. So if we're trying to end at 7:30, we've only got about 20 minutes to talk about masquerading, a bunch of other things. So I'm going to make one comment about setbacks, and it has to do with side setbacks. And I think that I'd like to see the side setbacks reduced a little bit, because I just feel like it's kind of a wasted space situation. And I like the aver, like, you know, Mr. Pyle said that the averages are allow for some different placing on the lot. So I want to stick with the averages, but I wonder if the commission is interested in, in maybe reducing the side setbacks by, I don't know, just a couple of feet in each category. You know, like, for houses less than 2,500 feet, go, go five feet, I think instead of eight is the starting point. 2,500 to 4,000 feet, go with eight feet, and above 4,000 feet, start with 12 feet. I don't know, that's, and those are just completely arbitrary. It just feels like 15 feet is a lot, especially if you have 15 feet on one side and 15 feet on the other side. That's 30 feet. And, you know, what are, what are you really doing with that 30 feet? Unless it, unless it abuts, like we talked about before, another development, unless your side setback is next to, like an R, like you're in a, you're in an R1 and it's next to an R4 or something, I don't know, unless you're dealing with something like that. I mean, my, I've always said that my biggest thing on the setbacks was keeping developments away from the arterial streets. So I'm, I'm just feeling like the side setbacks are not, I, I hate to see an inefficient use of land in this case.
I think, you know, inefficient use of, I actually, I think, day before yesterday, went out and measured the distance between my neighbor's wall and ours, and, and our houses are a little staggered. So it was actually nine feet. Minimum was nine feet, but the way our houses are structured, there's, you know, their house is a little ahead of ours, so then we still have like lots of open space. I think, you know, when we're looking at the set, at any of these criteria that, you know, we're looking for development code, I think some of the houses that are subdivisions that come to mind right away are the ones which are like, you know, boxed. And I think, so inherently, I think we're all looking at these regulations with that lens. And when you think about that, then definitely I want, you know, the side setback to be as, as much as we can, just because I feel like right now the houses are so close to each other, and I would rather have some space between them than not. So that is what it feels like. But, you know, like we've talked in the past, if there is some creativity, if it's just not in a line, then it probably makes sense to have lesser setback. And I can find ways to do, I mean, I like gardening, so I can find different ways to make use of that, because I don't think you, you know, you necessarily need landscaping for that. So I think that's, that's good, right? So you can make good use of that land. But that is what I feel like, yeah.
It feels kind of, because I agree with you, Vertuja, about space between neighbors, and certainly a lot of the newer construction we're seeing, we're seeing, they feel like they're very close together. They're big houses, and then they're like this much apart from each other. My, my biggest concern about the setbacks is, is the, as I've said before, is the view of any development from the arterial road and from the collector and the minor arterials, because it's not just about the people who are going to live in that neighborhood, and of course it is primarily about the people in that neighborhood, but it's also about neighborhood character and about the experience all of us have when we're driving down that road or walking down that road, and the impact that that new neighborhood has on all of us. And now we can, as we're walking down or driving past, we can see into other people's lives as we're going by, because when the lights are on and the TV are on, and I can see what's going on. And I think that impacts our neighborhood character. And it seems like we're, they're coming closer and closer to the streets, so I think the more we can, can set it back from a main or a minor arterial, the better. So I would, I would be more in favor of having that greater distance from the road to where then, where the house begins.
Couple of quick comments. Has, how much thought has been given to the setbacks and their size and their relationship and how they support the upcoming, the Urban Forest Management Plan? And has that been thought at all about?
If you go back to some of the, the tapes from some of the original meetings we had regarding the interim regs, including yours, I think in October of last year, one of the underlying issues that we faced with the smaller scenario of setbacks that we'd had in the previous code was that building a home on a small lot is ultimately a competition for space between the footprint of the home, the driveway, any amenities that might go in, sewer lines, water lines, gas lines, stormwater facilities, low-impact development, tree protection, root zone protection. You, you end up with this really stressful design scenario where every individual discipline is fighting to have the space set aside for its own purpose. A classic example of that is the relationship that we have with the King County Public Health Department and septic systems, because when you add a septic system to the mix, it's a whole nother scenario of space. So now you've got stormwater and septic and all the other stuff competing for space. So it was one of the underlying principles with larger setbacks, because as development has become more complex with some of these other regulations that aren't even related to setbacks, you need more space. And we're seeing buildings be designed or lots be laid out in subdivisions that then come in at a later date for individual home permits, and those individual home permits have to meet what are called under the Stormwater Manual Best Management Practices for Stormwater Management, where they then are applied to implement a vegetated flow path or infiltration trench or something, and there's just no space for it. So then we end up in this challenge of either the builder reduces the size of the home, which they really are reluctant to do, because they've already modeled their entire development based on a certain product and a certain output. I get that. But then they want us to give them a drainage adjustment that then relieves them from having to do all these other things that they didn't think about when they originally designed it, and now they're competing for space. So I argue that setbacks are really important in designing lots, and, and the right dimension is required, because there's always something that you need additional space for these days, given all the overlapping codes that we have.
Little bit of a safety valve, so to speak, for...
Yes.
So one other quick comment. I, I called the City of Yancourtis. I actually have a project going on up there, and I talked to the, the lead plans examiner. So they did not adopt the daylight plane setback. They are, they did adopt an FAR. They also did adopt a similar concept to the daylight plane for their detached accessory dwelling units, so that kind of helped keep the mass away from the property line. They do have a variable setback based on the number of stories of the house. So if you have a one-story house, you might be five feet from the property line. But if you go up the second story, then you, that second story has to be seven feet or something like that. So it kind of, I think, you know, it gives some variability to both the architecture and to the requirement for smaller houses, less setback. There's just a lot of different ways to look at it, for sure, out there. So I figured I'd share that discovery.
Eric, we decided earlier that we would take the daylight plane, and David had come up with another segment. I don't even know what you call it.
Building segments.
Building segments. So we decided to make that part of the additional phases, because we're just not ready to, yeah, we're just not ready by the public hearing to make a decision on it. So...
Commissioner Brooks, I'd be happy to talk with you offline on Tuesday and maybe next week, once we're back after the holiday, about what we put forward here earlier in the meeting, and bring you up to speed on that.
Yeah. It was, it was interesting. You'll like it. Also, I'm here, besides the thing, the, some of the amendments that Mark had put forth, are we in agreement that the setback should stay the same? Yeah, okay.
I would, for the sake of the discussion, only point out that the numbers that are in there came from somebody's made up out of their head, right? So if, that person would certainly not be concerned if you wanted to change those a little bit. But the flip side of that is that there's something to be said about, a 5,000-square-foot house is a big house. And when you talk about scale, one of the challenges is the, I think, that the, what we're seeing is a large house on a small lot, and the scale is what bothers people. So, you know, I agree, it's 30 feet in between those homes is quite a bit of what feels like, could feel like wasted space. But if we want something that has some aesthetics to it, and has some scale that makes sense, you know, that's what's, what's got to happen. The alternative is the encouragement to perhaps not build only 5,000, 6,000 square-foot homes, but to build some different-sized ones to fit them into the parcel better. And that's kind of what the objective of some of this is.
It's kind of the genius of your idea.
My observation is, is that you, you could maybe turn these numbers down a little bit, turn the dial back a click from what was originally proposed, as was suggested, that, you know, especially with the side yard setbacks, that you, you could turn the dial down. And I could take a crack at that if you want. Just, just thinking about how this would all play out in a division, and thinking specifically about one of the members of the public's comments when the meeting started regarding projects dropping from 18 to 14 lots, you know, that, that, my, my response to that is that largely has to do with the size of the product the builder is trying to build, and that the builder is unwilling to change the size of the product, but that's what the market's asking for. So, you know, I see that side of it. But when they say, oh, we're, we're, we're losing for lots, it's not because we're, we're making them lose lots, it's because they are choosing to build a product that won't fit on those lots, that they don't have enough space for once you add a larger setback. So if, if the objective is to no longer allow, you know, 4,000-square-foot homes on 4,000-square-foot lots, then, then that, you're achieving that. But that's definitely contrary to the trend that the, the building community in Sammamish has been attempting to achieve.
Why don't we leave it as it is, and if we want to make changes at the public hearing, we can do that?
Yeah.
If you, if you have a recommendation, I think, later, right, next, next session, I would certainly be interested in hearing that.
Yeah, me too.
I've always hoped that somebody smarter than the author of those numbers would suggest something.
Okay. Let's move on to, oh, gosh. I just don't think we're going to have enough time to get through this, but you want to start with masquerading? Or I mean, you want to continue on with masquerading, or should we do something like building height?
I only had one comment on masquerading. We had talked about perimeters, and considering that, I would still like to, even if it's part of a future work exercise, not lose sight of that idea, because a lot of the stuff on the interior of the development, you know, we could talk about that a lot, and, and this is good, maybe will be argued and changed a bit, but the perimeter is where you experience the most devastating impact of some of that. So I'd like to make sure that in the future we attack that a little bit.
And thank you for that comment. You know, it's possible to add some, a quick adjustment to that, where you talk about within 50 feet of the property boundary or within, you know, one-tenth of the property depth or that, you know, whatever, scale appropriately. Fill shall not exceed four feet. Cut shall not exceed four feet. So that you're kind of treating that blending around the edge differently than the interior, but it still limits significant grade changes in the interior of the property, because the challenges there are, again, we're competing with other codes like tree protection with low-impact development, where you're talking about soil disturbance and soil compaction and all those things, so.
I am also in favor of putting something in about the perimeter. I think it's really important.
I would also suggest, or remind us to think about, you know, the, there's often complex subsurface hydrology going on. So, you know, there's sep, there's septic fields that we don't know about. I had the pleasure of, when I first moved here, being hazed in the construction industry by being sent into a crawl space to dig a trench to guide water, you know, through a crawl space of a house. So, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on, and the deeper you dig, the more you disturb that, that type of stuff. And then on the surface hydrology, just the natural drainage ways, when you start changing even the interior, you start changing which direction water is running off, off this interior. So there's still just probably some consideration there. And just the soil cross-section, this mature soil cross-section, mature vegetation, that requires proper, you know, inspection, if they recreate that, there's a lot of inspection that would have to be done to ensure that that soil cross-section gets recreated. Mature tree loss kind of is loss of stormwater function in that regard, loss of community character when you lose our mature canopy. And, you know, in some cases, the, the masquerading can increase housing costs. So I think there's a lot of, still a lot of consideration to be done on masquerading, I think.
Okay. Maybe we'll just take a crack at street frontage real quick. I have one question. I wanted to know about the difference between, you mentioned the difference between the public street and the private street. Is the, is the public street like a 60-foot width and the private street? Can you give me different dimensions on that? Do you know what they are?
Not offhand, although it is a lesser dimension.
It's a lesser dimension.
Yeah. So in this case, the, the idea there is that even on a private street, you have less of a conflict between neighbors when they're trying to put out trashcans and those sorts of things that we find, you know, people say, oh, trashcan's not a big deal, but, you know, it's, it's sort of the usability of a project, and it's long-term. And on a private street, there is still more space than a shared driveway. So the problems that we'd had in those slides that you'd seen in the past were where homes were being fronted off of a shared driveway. So we've since changed, and this, this, this adjustment in our code comes from conversation with the Public Works city engineer regarding adequacy of a, of a private road. If a home were to front on a private road, is that adequate? And his comment was, well, it depends what you're trying to achieve. If you're trying to achieve, you know, more freedom for delivery of goods and services... If you're trying to achieve, you know, more freedom for delivery of goods and services, access points for water sewer, gas connections, those sorts of things, that it does achieve that. As compared to those slides, which were really the problem statement, were those slides. And this would ensure that that is not recreated in the city. You would only see two homes serviced off of a shared drive, as opposed to, you know, five or six, like we saw in the past.
Right, right, okay. My main concern was the impervious surface created with, you know, like 60 feet of public frontage. I didn't want to see that, especially in like a short plat, so...
There are other rules as well at play, which, for example, is the parking rule. So what we're really trying to do is find the right size of asphalt, the right size of impervious that's being created. However, that is providing for the various amenities, whether it's sidewalks and landscaping and parking and all of those things.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions? No?
I had emailed you, and perhaps you addressed this earlier before I got here, I apologize for my tardiness, about what the police department, what their thoughts are on, because public safety and policing of our community, and their opinions about these streets that we've been discussing.
So I have not directly engaged them on this. My experience with other police departments is that they rely heavily on, there's a document that is called Safe Communities by Design, or something along those lines, and it's something that law enforcement relies upon. And that document is largely in conflict with other community development standards and objectives. For example, that document cites that there should not be any type of landscaping around buildings, because that provides for areas where perpetrators might be able to stage and attack. So, you know, I've found that discussions with them have been valuable, but also have had somewhat conflicting objectives. So, you know, if it was the case of emergency services, I would say that you really would want to be talking with the Eastside Fire and Rescue, would be more of the organization that we'd want to engage for the purpose of aid car access, fire truck access, those sorts of things. Eastside Fire and Rescue does share a review authority with us on permits, so they already are engaged in that, when they're looking at subdivision layouts and the roadways and those sorts of things, they are already engaged in that. We typically don't include police in the review of, say, a subdivision, so.
Okay, if there are no other questions about this, I was thinking to move on to public comment. What do you think?
I had two other things, I'm sorry. I thought we were going step by step. One, the fencing, just a very small thing. I think maybe we should say 32 feet instead of 30 feet, because that gives you eight-foot modules, which somebody might build on.
Great comment.
Yeah.
I'm still struggling with, what does it look like under the parking section? Number three is providing parking within the driveway that services each new lot. I still am not sure I understand what that means. It bothers me, because it feels like somebody could develop somehow in a way that they provided all the parking in driveways, and I'm not sure I understand what that means.
Yeah, so this one, again, is getting at providing a hierarchy of importance, right? So first of all, put it on the street if you can put it on the street. If you can't put it on the street, then you need to show us why. Maybe there's another competing regulation, like stormwater rules, for example. But ultimately, would land you at, the final alternative is to put it on, in the driveway of the home that it's servicing. So you could put a parking space for the new home, so you'd have three parking spaces instead of two. Most homes that we see include one parking space on the driveway, one parking space in the garage. Then the garages get full of stuff, and then there's no way to park in them, and it just sort of causes more chaos. So what we would be requiring is then, is that they at least have one in the driveway, because we've often seen homes include that parking space in the, you know, both of them in the garage. Although with regard to setbacks, the code has always required a setback from garages to the property line, that would allow for one parking space to be located at least in the driveway. This would require that you have two, at least in the driveway.
I guess what I don't quite understand is just that the wording is in order of preference, which feels pretty soft to me. It doesn't, there's little required there. And I'm not sure if the concern is that we provide some street parking, I mean, really, that's the bottom line, provide adequate street parking. And frankly, many of these other changes probably result in that anyway. But if they don't, this says preference. And if their preference is to put them all in the driveway, they're in compliance.
You changed the words there. I see what you're saying. Again, we're going from having had absolutely no tools in our toolkit, to having something that we're trying to steer designers in that direction, of what is appropriate, you know, for the community. So it's that incremental change that we're going to be experiencing here. We could carry a big stick, if you want, we could do that. It just depends on, you know, the preference of how we proceed with the design community. You know, we're trying to strike a balance of improving the designs that we see come in the door, by giving our staff additional tools to work with designers, and push them to do things that they wouldn't have done before. So we've added, by making these changes that we see here in front of us, this is a huge change for us in terms of the staff being able to push designers to do things differently, whereas we really had no tools in the past code. So it's up to you.
Yeah, when I read this, I thought the same thing. Well, what they intend is do number one first, and then if that doesn't quite work, then do number two, and if you still can't make it work, then number three. But it doesn't really say that.
I'll try to find a better way to draft that. Yeah, good comment, thank you.
Just quick, and you don't even have to respond now, but I can't remember finding alleys, or what's the other term, wolfers?
Wunnerf.
In here specifically, is it in another part than you can...
Standards.
Yeah, alleys and wunnerfs are in the Public Works standards, and they might be considered as a public street or a private street.
On the fences, I had a question for you, David. I know there's provision for electric fences, and I was wondering about the pole height for the electric fences.
That was an existing standard, we have not touched that.
Okay, so that'll be still six feet?
I'd have to look closely at the rules around electric fences, but...
Okay, all right.
Okay, we'll move to public comment. So, well, this is the time for public comment on agenda items. So anyone wishing to speak has seven minutes. Who would like to come up first? Oh, I'm getting a... It's on. Yeah, give it if you want to. Thank you. Okay, so the first person on the list is Mary Wiktor.
Hello, my name's Mary Wiktor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. Great meeting, lots of work's been done. Thank you for the excellent things you've thought about, and discussions and changes that you made. Just first of all, I wanted to talk, I just have comments I wrote here as the discussion was happening. If you have utilities, people shouldn't be putting fences over those areas, I think. I don't know if those easements are protected, I don't know if that's in the code somewhere. If you're a person that has like a short plat, and you're in an R4, can you, does the zoning preclude you from doing the townhouse or the duplex thing? Because that sounds like a good idea for the people that are getting rounded down, that they could put in a duplex or a townhouse, instead of losing the one house that gets rounded, but I don't know if zoning allows that or not, because we have a lot of R1 and R4. I really like that you're incenting people to do that. I don't see anywhere in here that there's temporary erosion control, but I'd like there to be some permanent erosion control with vegetation and landscaping, because when you're doing cuts and fills, if you're not required to do landscaping, you end up with problems. Electric fences, I think, is an odd standard. I'm not sure I want to live next to one. Maybe there should be permission for that, but not the dog fences, the ones that are invisible and keep you in. I'm still worried about septic areas. If you cut a slope or there's a septic above you, you end up with water coming out, and the water quality isn't good. On the clearing and grading, I'm glad that you're at zero square feet and zero cubic yards. You need to have a permit in a critical area, but I would like to know definitely that the code will hold people to, they need to mark the critical area, they need to not disturb it, and it gets watched, because just telling people they have to have a permit, if they can still go in there and do whatever they want, it doesn't make any sense. So we need to make sure, first, that we have the threshold, that if you're working in a critical area, you got to have a permit. And then, secondly, are you doing things to preserve that and not destroy that? I think that's very important to do. I really liked the building segments thing and the daylight plane. I think Eric Brooks said that Yannacordus didn't adopt it. I know Mercer Island looked at doing the daylight plan, but I think they didn't adopt it. The part of the video that I did see, you guys had talked about maybe a solar access instead. I don't know if coming from the top, maybe, is less complicated than coming from the ground, otherwise I thought what you presented was very understandable and workable, so thank you for going through all that. There's a short plat up to nine units, and there's a long plat or a major subdivision at 10 units. I don't know, is there a big difference in code between doing a short plat versus a major subdivision? Because if so, then I think your nine-to-10 rounding thing, you know, example makes a difference, I don't know if the codes are way different. I like adding a maximum height to an ADU, I think the 20-foot might be a good idea to start with. I like the idea of when you're doing R8, you're looking at what it's next to. I like the idea of looking at masquerading for the perimeter. When you're talking about how much room to leave between houses, Mark Cross, who used to be on city council for eight years and mayor, he goes, "Can you get to your siding? Can you change your siding? Can you paint your house? If you don't have enough room, you probably got a problem." So that was his sort of usability for it, which I thought was very good. I'm glad that you made the comment about King County Health and septic, because stormwater septic and others do need to be provisioned and looked for. And I liked everything that Eric Brooks said about complex surface hydrology, soil, keeping that, whenever you're doing low-impact development, that type of thing. And then I did some photos to just try to give a little bit more input. So I have a, the presentation here is mostly visual, as you're used to what I've done from the past. The first one, this is a picture taken recently, this is in a critical area. On the left there, that is about cut this high. That's been done in wet season, it's in a critical area, it's a four-foot cut. You don't need to have a permit for a rocker at four feet. I honestly think if you're cutting four feet or more, not five feet, four feet or more, you need to have a permit, and you need to do something to stabilize it, because there's also a drainage ditch down there on the right, which is not in the picture. And this is where I think the temporary and permanent erosion control is super important, that there would be vegetation, plants and landscaping, and not just bark thrown on it whenever it's done. For fences, I try to bring input from other areas that are quiet, I don't know if you can see that really well, but that's a Bobcat or a Lynx on a fence. My husband dragged that off the internet, it is a Sammamish photo. You can see that they are walking up there. And this was actually from Mark Cross's backyard, they had put it up December 29th, and you can see that the Bobcat or Lynx is sitting there. Maybe they have some input about what the top of a fence needs to look like, because if you have a top of a fence that looks like this, where it's just one board, the cat has no place to sit. But if it's wide like these, the cat has a place to go. Maybe they're Olympic champions, and going six to eight feet doesn't matter for them. But I think we should think about them, because when we make cubicles and we're building fortresses with eight-foot fences, the wildlife really needs to get through. And based on that, I wanted to show a few more pictures on fences. This is a typical fence you might see. It has the slats. There's actually one comment in the code about how you can't have more than two inches of space, which, I'm not worried, I would rather have that fence than a solid fence next to me. Same thing for this one, this is a very old fence, this house was originally built in 1971, and that's the fence that's been there forever, and it's just so that people don't fall off where it gets steep next to the yard, so if your kids are playing. This is a very traditional split-rail fence, it just looks nice, it prevents people from walking down the slope to one other. The deer seem to be able to get around that one, and I know deer can do the amazing standing, still jump, but they don't want to jump into a blind area where they're stuck in your backyard, and there's deer that go by that fence all the time. So I just wanted to bring those couple of things as input. I understand that the public meeting isn't until the 31st, so I'll plan for that, but I thought, all the work and the code and the tables, I'll try to read through that and see, and I'll try to watch the four-hour meeting that I missed, because I know of the parts I watched, David said some really incredible things, like, we have a lot of roads to nowhere in cul-de-sac, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mary, for your comment. The next person on the list is Paul Stickney. No? Oh, you already had yours, okay. Okay, surprise. Perfect. The next person on the list is Gina Clark.
Chair Collins, is it okay to hand out some, to hand out some others? Okay. So this is a letter originally for council about this issue, and I don't think you received it originally back in October. So, good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Gina Clark, and I'm with the Master Builders Association. First, I want to thank staff for all their hard work. I know that they've been working on this a really long time, I don't know exactly how long, but probably too long, and then they just said through 2020, which didn't make me happy, so I'm sure they're probably not too happy about it either, but I know it's been a lot of hard work, and I've been on the other side as staff in another city, so this is definitely tedious and time-consuming, and I just don't want them to think that, especially from my point of view, that this has gone unrecognized. So thank you so much for everything that you've done. And the product that we see tonight is definitely a step in the right direction. We know that there's some work to do, but we're getting there, so. I don't know if you are all familiar with the process of how we got here, but I think what we have seen in the community was kind of a feeling, at least from staff and from some of the council members, that we had development regulations that were, or code that was very developer-friendly, so way over here, and we saw emergency regulations that swung us all the way over here. And I think what we're trying to do through the public input process, which we're very glad that council took the step back and said, "Why don't we take a breather and allow you guys to have some input, to have the community to have some input, and to have some amendments to the development regulations to meet somewhere in the middle." And there's, like I said, there's still some work to do, as you can see from our comments. We had some concerns with building height, the masquerading, density calculation around in parking and fencing. There's been some good compromise so far. Who was on, can you, David, let me know? I can't remember who from our industry was on the working group.
The focus group.
Jeff Peterson from Toll Brothers.
Okay.
Jeff Peterson from Toll Brothers, Mike Walsh from Tureen Homes, and we included Toby Conan from Pace Engineers.
Okay.
And there was one other individual, I'm trying to trace back in my mind.
Yeah, I couldn't remember who the other person is.
Do you recall who the fourth was?
I'll think about it for a minute. I can actually look at my computer and find it pretty quickly.
But the city was great, and being able to include a lot of our members, several of our members, on the working group, to be able to help guide them in drafting these regulations and these suggestions that are before you tonight. So we had some input, for example, on the excavation. When we first saw the regulations, to us, what a lot of our members saw was, you can't grade below or excavate below 10 feet. And what does that do? Well, you can't cut roads, you can't put in utilities, you can't put in vaults. And so they listened to us, and working together, we were able to have some compromises in there, and working together to collaborate, we were able to get some exceptions in. The same with the density calculation rounding. What I'm seeing in the code now is some flexibility for staff, is the ability for staff to work with us in some creative ways, that I don't think I've seen in Sammamish before, that we do get out of Kirkland, that we do get out of Redmond, that we do get out of Isiqua. And I think those are some necessary steps, and very much in the right direction. Also, some clarity. What's really, really good for our builders is to be able to have that predictability. Predictability leads to shorter timelines and turnarounds, and for review and for process. and for review and for process. And that's really important for us, to be able to put product on the ground quickly and to not have that development process going on for a long time and that review process going on for a long time. So if the code can be clear and have that clarity both for staff and for us and to eliminate conflicts in interpretation, that's very important as well. I would say that I'm loving seeing the flexibility when it comes to ADUs and cottages and the thinking of, when it comes to setbacks and the density calculations, that it's not a one-size-fits-all. And I think you're going to start seeing that more as some of our builders do look outside of the big, single-family home model. We understand that zoning and density have to go together. So as you look at the town center being developed and more density going in there, your code is going to have to speak to that as well. So keep that in mind, that we have builders whose models are in other communities starting to go from that single-family residential into duplexes, into triplexes, into mixed-use development. So we will build that type of product up here if the zoning and the density and certain members of council will allow that to move forward. Your council has had us hopping, let's just say that, with a lot of issues. And concurrency was up on Tuesday. A lot of our members have not had a solid chance to go through the regulations that were before you tonight. They've definitely been watching them. Some of them have been participating in the process. And I've sent them out to a number of our members to look through. They're in the process of reading those. I've definitely looked through them and am marking them up. I will have something more formal for you to look at next week, hopefully by close of business on Wednesday. I don't know when staff needs something for the record. Is it next Thursday or Friday for the public hearing?
Sorry. It's always preferred to have it earlier in order for us to distribute it to the members of the commission.
Sure.
However, it's only required to be provided with the public hearing, which is scheduled for the 31st.
The 31st, okay. But I want to get those to you so you can make a more informed decision. This is hugely complicated. And I know with some turnover on commission, there's going to be another re-education process, I think, if you don't make a decision on the 31st. I'm a little torn with whether or not we should keep this process going on the 31st. I'm not saying, you know, delay it or anything. I'm not making that recommendation now. But I see a lot of questions. And then even tonight, you didn't get through, I'm assuming, all the questions that you had. I would rather see this public process done right and with all the questions answered and with all the input that staff needs in order to write a code that's clear and predictable and flexible for them to create that kind of product that resolves those questions that the community has and those concerns that the community has that, from some product that has been put on the ground before that has raised those questions. While at the same time answering questions, oh, there's that red light, that we, as developers, have to meet for you as well and along with other things that are coming down the road, like the town center and density and traffic concerns that you deal with at the same time. If you have not had a chance to meet with some of our members who can describe this much more eloquently than I, please, please call, use this as a resource. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Gina, for your comment. Okay, does anyone else like to speak? We do have council member Karen Moran in the public today. Do you want to say anything? No? Okay. All right, I think that wraps up public comment. So, final item of business tonight is adjournment.
Prior to adjournment, I wanted to give people something to keep them awake or put them to sleep tonight. I had the opportunity to attend Downsizing 101 Seminar today. Very edifying. But one of the things that were brought out was, believe it or not, one of the largest categories of construction today is storage. So just with that in the back of your mind, don't gather so much stuff. Okay.
Working on that. Need a motion to adjourn.
And on top of that, I would move to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And the meeting is adjourned at 7:21.